in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So much so that currently, as we look at our benchmark for this year, and we look at what we had projected to collect in terms of tax revenue, we are seeing revenue collections well in excess of those projections. And as a result of that, we were able to conduct budgeting, which is far more favorable than we had feared that it would be. And so in the first instance, the House, and I want to recognize Representative Hill because he's just arrived, and the House has just completed conducting its budget debate for the coming fiscal year, for the fiscal year 2022, which begins on July 1st. And in that debate, one of the most significant things that has happened is an agreement between the House and the Senate to substantially increase the amount of funding, seventy, for instance, which funds our schools, to the extent that we are going to be able to increase that funding by about $219 million over the current fiscal year in the next fiscal year. In addition to that, we're going to be able to increase unrestricted general government aid by an amount that is close to $40 million. And there's also something very interesting about the agreement that's been reached between the House and the Senate. And that is that we have a phenomenon that's occurred as a result of the pandemic where we believe that we're going to see during the coming school year increased enrollment in our public schools. And the reason for that is because during the pandemic, students have gone to different places and not necessarily been in their usual placements in our public schools. But as the pandemic, God willing, winds down, we think that we're going to see re-enrollment of those students. And so what the budget agreement reflects between the House and the Senate is a $40 million reserve account to be able to help school districts if they have a large influx of students returning to school in the middle of the school year. So as I mentioned, the House has completed its budget debate. The Senate will begin budget debate in the middle of this month. And we are very, we're very pleased to be able to see increases for Chapter Seventy school aid for unrestricted general government aid. And hopefully, as we continue to see the recovery of this economy, we'll be able to have increasingly strong partnerships between state government and our cities and towns. And Representative Hill will continue to work with me, and we will both continue to work for things like increased regional school transportation and increased special education circuit breaker funding. Both of those things are on the table, and I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to see some good results as budget deliberations continue. Lastly, I just wanted to mention two specific regional efforts that I think are very important and that I wanted to give some credit to local officials for. The first is the work that's being done on creating a regional vaccination clinic for COVID-19 vaccinations in our area. Six communities have joined together and made an application to the Commonwealth, to the Department of Public Health, to be able to conduct vaccinations here locally so that folks won't have to travel a great distance to be able to get them. Whenham, as part of that collaboration, I want to say thanks to everyone in the community that's been involved. And similarly, Representative Hill and I are both working very hard at the situation with regard to water supplies and drought resilience. And we also have a regional task force that's working together on that because we believe that the solution to increasing our water supplies and our water resilience and our drought resilience is much more likely to be one that's successful if it is regional as opposed to it being individual. We're making good progress. We have a long way to go. But everyone that's involved in it deserves credit and deserves, I believe, your thanks and appreciation for your local officials that are participating in that effort. So, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate being able to share a couple of thoughts. Again, I think that as we look forward, and hopefully we're able to put this dreadful pandemic behind us, we can look forward to having increased resources. And most importantly, hopefully, a return to the things in our lives that we enjoy so much that we have perhaps in the past taken for granted, but I don't believe ever in the future we'll take for granted again. Thank you very much, and thanks for coming out to town meeting today.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. And I believe that Representative Hill is here as well and may have a few words to say. You're on the clock.
Ditto. I'm not going to repeat what Senator Tarr just said, but Senator Tarr and I do want to say thank you to your town officials who have worked with us over the last year during this pandemic to make sure that the citizens of Whenham have been taken care of during the pandemic. Specifically, I have been working with Jim Reynolds over at the Council on Aging. I know he's outside in the sun, I believe, but he has done an extraordinary job of making sure that our seniors are taken care of and that they get the food and help that they need during this pandemic. I also want to give a quick shout out to your interim town manager, Tom Younger, who has worked with Senator Tarr and I. It has not been an easy process to get some of the funding that has been put forth by the federal government and the state government, but our partnership with Tom has been a very good one. And Whenham has seen the fruits of his very hard labor over this past year. Tom, Senator Tarr, and I want to thank you for that great partnership that we've had with you and the Board of Selectmen as we have gotten through some very scary times, if I can be honest. And your police chief and your fire chief, who I know are here today, we have worked with them very, very closely to ensure that we get the help to the citizens that they need. That's it for me. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to your boards and to your department heads for a job well done. Have a great meeting.
Well, everyone, welcome and thank you for coming to Whenham's 2021 Annual Town Meeting. And in an effort to expedite the meeting in light of the pandemic and some recent changes in leadership here, the Select Board has worked with the Finance Committee to identify articles that were financial and operational priorities. And I'm going to try my best to shorten the usual opening remarks aside from a couple of things that I have to bring up right now. My, my next comments relate directly to my standing before you today. By way of background, over the years, I've served as interim moderator when the need arose. The Board of Selectmen, or now the Select Board, has identified two qualifications in the selection of an interim moderator. The first was that the person was available to attend an organizational meeting. And the second was that the person did not intend to be a candidate for election to the office of town moderator. And as has been the pattern, I'm the lucky candidate appointed by the Board as temporary town moderator through the conclusion of this town meeting. And as some of you may remember, I've served multiple town, multiple times in this capacity. So I've got a head start. I did, in fact, attend the pre-meeting via Zoom where we discussed the topics relative to today's meeting. I have consulted with town administration, Finance Committee Chair, and current town council concerning procedural and substantive issues that may arise. And at this time, I would ask that the town clerk, Trudy Reed, make a nomination to elect me as temporary moderator.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I'd ask the town clerk, Trudy Reed, for a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Seconded.
And I would now ask the chair of the Select Board to cast the sole vote necessary and declare the result.
And I cast a sole vote for Anthony Fahey to do a, as usual, great job as moderator. Thank you.
Okay. Now, as temporary moderator, the first thing I want to do is to ask for your patience and your indulgence as we proceed to the business of the day. I think I've got to get sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you turn to your soundly swear that you vote faithfully in the question of whether you'd be elected as a moderator for the town of Whenham to the best of your knowledge and ability according to the bylaws and the towns and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
I do. Thank you. Be careful. So I now call the annual town meeting to order. Turns out, we're going to use voting cards today. I will ask you to raise your card to reflect a vote of yes or no on a particular motion. The reason we're using our cards is that the clickers aren't working. So that'll be for the next town meeting, I think. And if there is a question about a vote, and if we needed a specific count, our town clerk has enlisted volunteers, if that's necessary, to work as tellers to clarify a vote if it is so close that I can't call it from the podium. So, some brief introductions. To my left, we have town council, Joel Vard of KP Law. We've got our interim town administrator, Thomas Younger. We've got Jackie Bresnahan, Director of Administrative Services, and the Select Board Chair, Gary Cheeseman, and Catherine Harrison. Obviously, we've got Trudy seated in front. And to my right, we have the Finance and Advisory Committee, chaired by Jim Purdy, and members Alex Vegan, David Molitano, Carrie Jelsma, and Susan Malin. And they're joined by Jamie Cologne, our finance director, as well. The conduct of our meeting is governed by the rules of town meeting time if a question comes up. That's a special set of parliamentary procedures developed by the Massachusetts Moderators Association for our type of New England town meeting. My responsibilities include presiding over the proceedings, deciding questions of order, declaring votes, and granting leave to address the meeting. Now, to ensure that we have an orderly meeting and that people who want to speak are able to do so, permission of the moderator is required to address the meeting. If you wish to speak, come to one of the microphones in front of me here and wait. Socially distance if there are other people there. And when you recognize, please state your name, street address, and we'll have a three-minute limit for speaking per resident, per article. And no, there won't be a clock. It'll be approximately three minutes, and I'm sure everybody will comply with that. At this meeting, the town clerk's role is to keep the official record of all motions made and all votes taken. And as I explained, if we need to count the vote by hand, the town clerk has folks standing by. Please remember that we are in a legislative session here for the town of Whenham. We're here today with our friends and with our neighbors and that I ask, and if need be, I'll enforce our obligation to be cordial and respectful. We have a number of non-residents in attendance. We generally allow only residents to speak on a particular matter. However, I'll assume that the meeting is comfortable allowing the interim town administrator, department heads, or town council to speak if they have relevant information and after being recognized by the moderator. Hearing no objections to that, I declare that it is so by unanimous consent. If any other non-resident wishes to speak on a particular matter, they may request to do so through the moderator. And consistent with our practice, I will then ask the town meeting to vote on such a request by a non-resident. Only registered voters may vote. Each voter received, I hope, a voting card at check-in, and that's all that we can use for voting. And before we proceed with the articles, and we'll get to that very quickly, I've got just a couple of additional presentations. We've heard from Senator Tarr and Representative Hill. We also have a brief report by Town Government Study Committee to be presented by their chair, Patrick Waddell. He is here, yes, okay. Absolutely. You've got the floor.
Hello, town meeting. I apologize for my attire. I came from a doubleheader, which I'm headed right back to. It'll be the last ad lib for me. At the special town meeting on October 2020, through a non-binding vote, you approved studying whether Whenham will be better served by a select board of three or five members. The committee was formed on January 19th, 2021, and our current committee members are Dave Anderson, Harriet Davis, Mike Lucy, Deidre Perotti, who is the clerk, Roger Smirich here, and Patrick Waddell, myself, as the chair. We have two ex-officio members, Tom Younger, our interim town administrator, and Paul Weaver, former Whenham Town Council and moderator. The committee's official charge is, will the town of Whenham be better served by a three-person or a five-person select board? We were initially convened on February 11th, 2021. In our, in our weekly meetings, we have spent our time determining who we would seek to interview, the format we would use, and the questions we would ask. The committee is seeking input from a broad array of sources. We have begun with former Whenham Select Board members, current and former Whenham Town Administrators, comparable towns' Select Board members, and members of Whenham's boards and committees. Other towns have taken up this question, and we're drawing from their research as well as our own, but our analysis will be specific to the town of Whenham. We have started receiving responses, and you can track our progress through the town's website. All of our documents, all the responses we've received are available for public viewing. The committee would also like to hold at least two public hearings. We anticipate holding the first virtual hearing on May 17th to gather input from citizens. The second hearing would be to provide our recommendation and rationale, including majority and minority opinions. The committee has asked that the Select Board to extend our terms through next year's annual town meeting. We look forward to completing the data collection phase and then diving into the analysis. We anticipate having a completed report and a recommendation well before next May. Personally, I would like to express my gratitude, respect, and admiration for our committee members. We have excellent productive discussions, and I encourage all to attend our meetings via Zoom. The committee would also like to express our unanimous support for the name change, Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and to thank Chairman Cheeseman and the Select Board for putting the issue on today's warrant. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your attendance at town meeting.
And I guess we also have a presentation by the Select Board Chair, Gary Cheeseman.
Good afternoon. Glad to see everybody get out here. We have a good forum today. Besides the town study committee that we would point as a temporary basis, the Board of Selectmen, CUNB Select Board, also created another committee since the last town meeting in the fall. That committee is the Human Rights Committee, and certainly is an important new aspect for Whenham given the national news and everything that people have witnessed over the past year. So I'd just like to recognize that committee. Martha Brennan is the chair. Jenna Burks is the clerk. Chief De Napoli serves on there as well. Chris Latova is the vice chair. Sam Norberg, Jeremy Gross, and Patricia Purdy are the other voting members. And we have Tom Younger as the ex-officio. Also, Emma Dixon is the student representative to that committee. So thank you to all those people for stepping up. Now, I would like to have Tom Younger and Michelle and Mary Beth, if you'd like to join us. We have a special presentation given the history of this past year. And come on over up here, and we'll let Tom read the citation. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Tom Younger, your interim town administrator, and I want to thank everyone here for taking me into the community and made me feel like family. So thank you very much. Next, the proclamation from the Whenham Select Board. We offer our sincerest thanks to Mary Beth Ting, whereas the town of Whenham strongly supports the efforts and work made by all the people within the medical profession, emergency management, first responders, and public health community during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the town of Whenham entered into a state of emergency on March 17th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Mary Beth Ting has served as a town as public health nurse and as the Miles River Middle School nurse for many years. And whereas Mary Beth Ting is a graduate of Mass General Institute of Health Professionals. And whereas Mary Beth Ting stepped up in February 2020 to begin learning and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic and planning for both the town and the school general safety measures and support. And whereas Mary Beth Ting became and remains to the present a key player in the town and regional school district efforts for testing and vaccinating as well as contact tracing and communication. Whereas, we come together to recognize Mary Beth Ting for her dedication, service, compassion, and patience as she has guided and served the town throughout the crisis. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Whenham Select Board do hereby recognize Mary Beth Ting's dedicated service and witness whereof we, the Whenham Select Board, do hereby set our hands in a firm, the great seal of the town of Whenham this first day of May 2021, Gary Cheeseman Chair, Catherine Harrison Vice Chair. Thank you very much, Mary Beth.
Mary Beth, if you could approach the podium.
Mary Beth, we'd like to both present to you a hydrangea plant that has not yet quite bloomed, so we have the future in front of us. And what I would like to share with the community, I have the good fortune of working with Mary Beth both in the school district and as her position as Board of Health Nurse. And I cannot express more firmly how remarkably important Mary Beth has been in terms of getting through this pandemic. I know that Mary Beth works evenings till midnight. I know Mary Beth works on weekends in both her job as the middle school nurse and the public health course for Whenham. And after a full day, a full week of work, when we all went to get our vaccinations at the vaccination clinic, guess who was there helping out? Mary Beth Ting. The towns of Whenham and Hamilton have been so well-served by the dedication and integrity that you have brought to this process, and we are deeply, deeply appreciative of all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as we begin the very formal aspect of the meeting, I wonder if everyone would rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance, remembering our own responsibility to guarantee liberty and justice for everyone in our community. Pledge allegiance. So we'll turn to Article One. I can't see any of the screens, but I'm assuming that... No further questions. Okay. The annual operating budget for the town for fiscal 2022, the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, is set forth in Article One. All routine expenditures required to provide town services, including costs for the town chair of the regional school district budget and shared service agreements, are organized by categories. The Finance and Advisory Committee, working with the town administrator, Board of Selectmen, and department heads, compiles the annual budget and will present a motion to authorize expenditures to operate the town and to provide funding therefore. After a brief overview of the budget and the town's financial condition by Finance and Advisory Chair Jim Purdy on behalf of the committee and a short presentation by the superintendent of the regional school district, Mary Beth Benios, I'll entertain the formal motion under Article One. And Jim will then read the budget totals by department as usual. If anyone has a question, a comment, or a proposed amendment on a budget item, just say "hold" as loudly as possible so I can hear it following reference to that budget line. All questions and comments will be taken when we go back to the "holds." But we'll get through the budget and then go back and listen to questions or comments or amendments, if there are any, with respect to the "holds." After all, categories have been read. We will go back through the budget. And at that point, I'll recognize anybody who has a question, comment, or amendment. And amendments to the official motion might include a change in the dollar amount proposed for an expenditure by way of an example. If somebody's got an extremely complicated motion, I may require it to be in writing. And we'll work that, but I'm not anticipating that. But if we've got something that runs pages or something, I may require that to be in writing. So, Mr. Purdy, let's begin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon. The Finance Committee members have been introduced, but I want to take a moment to thank them for their hard work, their thoughtful contributions, and our respectful deliberations between the committee members. It's been a very good year in terms of our work, and I appreciate it very much as the chairman. This year, we have two members that are rotating off of the committee. Carrie Jelsma has been on the committee for four years and will be rotating off at the end of this fiscal year. And Alex Vegan has been on for six years. And I want to recognize both of them, and particularly Alex, for his three years as chair of the committee. Thank you very much. It has been an absolute pleasure working with both of you. I appreciate it. It makes my job a little bit easier as chair. I'd also like to echo the thanks of the moderator in terms of the senior administrative staff of this community in the town hall. Their support throughout the year. They attend every meeting. They give us the materials and the data that we're required to have to make decisions and to move the agenda forward on the budget. And they keep us on track. I also want to acknowledge this year, Mr. Gary Cheeseman. Gary, excuse me, has the Board of Selectmen Chair. For the past several months, has attended every one of our Finance Committee meetings. They have been Zoom, but he's attended every meeting. And what this has done over the course of the past four months has facilitated communication, decision-making, review of difficult issues. And Gary, I appreciate it very much and want to thank you. It's been very helpful. I'll keep my remarks regarding the budget as brief as possible, but I do want to give you an overview. I first want to just tell you a little bit about the Finance Committee for those folks that may not be as familiar. It is an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. We are appointed, and as noted, we have five members. We begin our deliberations and our work in September, and it goes up through Town Meeting Day. We had a meeting, in fact, just before this meeting adjourned. We meet every other week throughout the year. By the way, those meetings are open, public meetings, on Zoom. And I begin every meeting with open comments and questions from the community. So please feel free to join us for those meetings. They're not exciting, but they're informative. The other, the other piece that the Finance Committee does is really quite valuable. We meet with all department heads throughout the budget cycle. We have met multiple times with the school leadership and the school committee. We meet with our colleagues in Hamilton. We meet with the Finance Committee in Hamilton and have discussions with them. We meet with the Finance Committee in Hamilton and have discussions with them about our shared service costs. We feel that these joint meetings are critical to a cooperative working arrangement within the Town of Wenham, but also with our neighbors and our shared service agreements with the Town of Hamilton. The other thing that we do do as a Finance Committee is we meet one whole Saturday, typically at the start of the year, and that is the point at which all department heads give their initial presentation of their budgets and their capital, the operating budgets and their capital requests. And by the way, I'd like to also thank the department heads. They've been very cooperative. We've worked with them closely, and they've put forward their budgets in a very responsible and thoughtful manner. Thank you, department heads. All right. So, let's get into talking a little bit about the budget. We're very pleased to be able to present a balanced budget this year with no override articles. I will explain as I go through this my remarks how we got there, but it is, our budget is budgeted, and the revenues are within the proposition two and a half override levy limit. We have new growth revenues, we have local receipts, and we certify, we have certified free cash that has helped us avoid the overrides that we've had in the past several years. We are, we, meaning the Finance Committee and all of you, I'm sure, are very aware of where we are with overrides, where we are with our mill rate, our so-called mill rate and our tax rate, and we're cognizant of being careful as we can in reviewing the budget in the budget process. This was also achieved through careful and thoughtful deliberations and discussions with the leadership of the schools and the school committee. The school committee put forward a budget that, for the first time in some time, recognized the pressures and demands that the budgets make on town operations and town government. That has been very helpful this year to allow us to expense some dollars that you'll see in Article Two and Article Three that we have not been able to address before. So that has been a very helpful cooperative process with the school department. It's appreciated. All right. So this year, we've had some challenges, but you know, one of the things in Wenham that is, it's kind of a mixed situation. We always say to ourselves, and anyone who's lived there even a year, that we have no commercial base, but we have a residential base. The interesting thing about this is our residential base and our residential tax revenues and tax collections have been very strong. We have lost no revenues through our residential tax base and our residential tax collections. And the last number I saw was we are at just about 99% of the collection of our tax revenues this year and going into fiscal year '22. So, our net, our net state aid has increased, as Senator Tarn, Representative Phil mentioned, by approximately $84,000 going into the next fiscal year. Our commercial revenues, one of the downsides this year has been, and we're working on this very hard, our commercial revenues from the iron rail property have had some challenges. We've been working with them very closely. Mr. Younger has been working with the Iron Rail Commission to address those, and we look forward to next year to a recovery of those revenues as we go forward. Chapter 70 and school transportation funds, I'm going to defer to the school leadership to discuss those numbers as they have come up. So, basically my remarks about the revenue, which I'll put on a slide, it's right there in front of you. Are information that can be found in the warrant book, both in our FinCon report as well as in the actual warrant articles themselves. So our total budget request this year is for, I'm going to round the numbers off a little bit, so just bear with me on that. Our total budget request this year is for $21,998,000. It's an increase in the prior year of 3%. We think that that's a modest increase, a fair increase for the town to manage. Though that revenue, that the increase in expenses is supported by revenue of $22,000, and $22,000, $12,000. So let's just go through, it's up on the slides. Right away, you'll see that the burden, as I mentioned, on the real estate tax levy is 86% of the town's revenues at $18,973,000. The net state aid is $268,000, which is an increase, the net aid is $84,000, $83,000 increase from the prior year. Our local receipts, so the local receipts, let me just remark on that just for a minute, is $2.517,000. And that includes, for example, just to outline this, includes motor vehicle excise tax, license and permit fees, fines, investment income, rental income, the water fund, and assessments to the Town of Hamilton for their share of the services that we administer, particularly the library. Local aid represents 11% of our revenue. So we're looking at, for the town, our revenue source of 97% to reach our goals. This year, we've also used the so-called, the Assessor's Overlay Account. The Assessor's Overlay Account is essentially an account that the Board of Assessors, it's a town account, it's a reserve account that the Board of Assessors holds to make sure they have enough dollars for abatements. That has been building essentially for the past several years, and they were able to take $125,000 at our request to move into general operations, so we appreciate the Board of Assessors' help with that. Now, I want to go back to Laura, the, let's see, I want to go back to the, what am I looking for here? I'm sorry, maybe I'm just a moment. The free cash, free cash budget. Okay. So this year, we have had free cash certified by the state of $286, I'm sorry, $628,000. Now, what we typically do with that is set aside $250,000 for a free cash reserve account that is the best practice that we have in the community and for the Department of Revenue. We have also from that to avoid, let's see, sorry, there we go, I'm sorry. To avoid the override we've taken from free cash, $316,400, and that's, you'll see in Article Two. And in Article Three, you'll see capital requests that were also taken out of free cash for $259,600. So that's how we've been using our, we will be using and proposing the use of our free cash going forward. All right. So let's move to the expense side, if we could. All right. The town operating and capital expense inclusive of the schools has increased by approximately 2.9%. The schools operating assessment to the Wenham has increased, I think, as I mentioned, by 1.86%. And it's driven in large part by a student enrollment shift in projections, which drives by the apportionment agreement that we have between Hamilton and Wenham. This year, it has decreased our expenses for the town in terms of the apportionment agreement. That slide was, you can see that slide last year, for example, one at 638. The best projection that we had at this time is 558 students going into the next year. So, thank you, Laura. We'll go to the expense slide. So once again, as I think we're well aware, that the school budget is 55% of our expenses. Now that includes both the regional, the regional schools, as well as the technical, Essex Technical Program. The Hamilton-Wenham assessment for the schools this year is $11,865,000. That includes debt expenses. That's a cost increase to the Town of Wenham of $213,480. Our share of the budget with Hamilton and the share of apportionment between the two represents 35.6%, a decrease of approximately 1% of the prior year. The Essence Vocational School is $171,000, and that remains essentially unchanged. The next slide is Public Safety. That includes fire, police, street wardens. That expense for this year is projected at $2.488,000, $2,488,000, or 11%. Public Works represents 8% of the budget, or $1,660,000. And that includes snow removal, street lighting, refuse collection at $470,000, which is a big portion of that budget and highway. General Government represents 7%, or $1,500,000. And that includes all town operations, including legal, information technology, assessors' office, clerks' office, senior administrative staff, utilities and supplies. The other expense that has a fairly substantial expense of $1.9 million includes health insurance for employees, benefits, general town liability, legal expenses, our share of Medicare, and the town share of retiree health expenses known as OPEP, other post-employment benefits. The Water Fund is self-funded through our water bills, is $543,000, or 2%. The debt service that we borrow, we borrow money, it's 2%, $525,000. Culture and Rec is $1 million, roughly, or 5%. That includes the library, historic commission, and Human Services is 1% of council aging and the health program. So that's where we get our, that's where we spend our money, is how we get our money and how we move the budget forward. Let me just, some highlights of Article One that I think are important to point out this year in a positive way. We have incorporated into the budget a full-time police officer through the reduction of reserve officer expenses, so we will have on 24-hour duties a full-time sworn officer on staff. We have funded a second full-time licensed operator for the water department, help with operations and oversight of our, 24-hour oversight of our water system. We have ongoing upgrades in equipment to vehicles and buildings and equipment. We funded, in this budget, funded a townwide master plan to support the town's future growth opportunities, use of resources, open space, and economic development opportunities to help reduce the residential tax burden on citizens. We funded the Wenham share or the library roof upgrade, and we are funding, proposed funding of a compensation and classification site. Could you go to Slide Five? I wanted to go over this briefly because it isn't a warrant book. This is an estimate of our tax rate projection into the future. It's 81 cents on the $1,000. The valuation of our taxes is predicated on the valuation for the year, and it changes from year to year as you can see in your notes. It's impacted by values as they go up and down. This is also impacted by, this year, by two different areas. One is the debt purchase on the fire truck that we approved last year for $500,000. That new debt service that rolls into $22,000, $72,000. And the school district, our share of the school district capital improvement debt service, Wenham sure is $66,000. So that also impacts the tax, the tax rate coming up that will be decided in November. And just for as an example, the current median house value is $558,900. That would calculate out to an annual median house rate value of $453 on your tax bill in the coming year. So just, as I wrap up, I just would like to mention some future goals and challenges. We have, in front of us, our continued significant reliance on residential real estate and local tax receipts. We have in front of us the long-term debt to fund town share of retired employees. We have our challenge to continue to work with the school systems, and that requires ongoing and collaborative discussions with the Town of Hamilton, school leadership, our state representatives, and in fact, this year, we'll continue our discussions with the school leadership beginning this summer, which actually, summer months prior earlier than the past years. We continue our discussions with the Town of Hamilton as we fund current shared services and explore potential future shared services. And if approved, by the town meeting, development of the master plan subcommittee is to be moved forward. And then we also have continued long-range capital planning. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to this, and we'll move forward with Article One. Thank you.
Just a reminder that if you do have to leave for any reason at all, please do so by going through check-ins so that you give back your voter card. And I'll remind everybody when it comes time to voting, I do need people to be seated when we're voting with these cards so that I can see everyone and be very comfortable, you know, about the vote. If people are moving around, it just makes things a little bit more difficult. So, thank you very much. And by the way, I would never require people to turn their phones off in the way things are these days with childcare and everything else, but if you can put it on some sort of a vibrator or something like that, that'd be great. But again, if you need to have that phone on, then leave it on, but if there's a call that you have to make, then please exit so that you won't disturb the meeting or anybody else. Okay, we also have a presentation by our school superintendent, Mary Beth Benios, before we go through the details of Article One.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I deeply appreciate this opportunity to address the community of Wenham regarding the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District Budget. One of the things that is, from my perspective, exciting about this budget is that it enables us to start thinking about recovering and building a collective vision for the district's future. On April 5th, we were able to return Um, on April 5th, we were able to return all of our K-12 students to full in-person learning, um, and with that milestone achieved, we are able to start to again focus on recovery and the collective vision for this district. Next slide. This has been a remarkably challenging year, and the way that we have been able to get through that is with a lot of help from a lot of folks. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank our families and students, our educators and administrators, the Hamilton-Wenam Regional School District School Committee, the Hamilton and Wenam Town Administrators, the Hamilton and Wenam Boards of Health, the Hamilton and Wenam Fire and Police, and the Select Boards and Finance Committees. This has truly been a united and collaborative effort, and everybody who participated, who worked with us, extended themselves this year. Our deep appreciation is expressed. Next slide. What I want to share with you right now is a brief, um, overview of our operating budget. Um, what you see here is that the district is seeing a 3.53% increase in the operating budget, and Wenam's share of that is a 1.86% increase in the budget. The next piece of our budget is the debt service budget, um, and you'll notice that there is an increase of almost 40% in the debt service, and that may feel somewhat alarming to folks. But I want to just remind folks that this is directly connected to the 1 million capital projects, $1 million for the capital projects that you approved at last year's town meeting. So, in fiscal 20, year, in fiscal '22, that bill starts to become due, so that's why you're seeing that major increase in the debt service budget. Next slide. So, if we factor in both the operating budget and the debt service budget, you'll see that the district is putting forth a budget that is increasing by 3.99%. Um, and again, due to some, some slight enrollment shifts, um, that Wenam's share of that increase will be 2.32%. Want to also point out that this is the lowest budget the town of Wenam has seen in the past five years. The five-year increase has been 6.73%, and this year, we are bringing you a budget that reflects a 1.86% increase. When thinking about this budget, there were a number of priorities that informed decision-making. First, we needed to restore the capacity that was lost in last year's cuts. As you'll remember, there was a lot of concern about what was happening with COVID and state funding, and in June of last year, less than a year ago, 22.59 positions were cut from the school district budget. That was 8% of our staff. So, this budget, there were things that were cut at that time that absolutely were unsustainable, and they needed to be returned to this budget. As part of those cuts, the middle school model was dismantled at Miles River Middle School. It was a priority to restore that model. As we've heard, um, from FinCom as well, we have unfunded OPEP liabilities, and we wanted to start on a path to, um, provide the resources that are going to be needed for those, those liabilities. And then finally, we know that as we look at the, the challenging fiscal landscapes ahead, that it is essential that we're working collaboratively with our towns, um, understanding the, the fiscal needs of towns, while at the same time ensuring that we're able to provide a high-quality education for every single one of our students. At last year's town meeting, I, I stood before you, and this slide came up that said, "What are we committing to?" And what we committed to as a district is to reevaluate our existing programs and structures to see if we could find efficiencies and ways to create, um, increased effectiveness with the money entrusted to us. We committed to creating a predictable year-over-year budget, and we committed to working in collaboration and partnership with the town managers, select boards, and FinCom members. So, in holding to that committed, commitment, we reevaluated, we restructured, and we restored. So, we reevaluated our curriculum and instruction leadership, that, that particular function of the school district was almost entirely eliminated last year. We looked to bring that back in a more efficient and effective and less costly way. We looked at restructuring our literacy intervention program, um, as this has been a district goal both last year and this year. Uh, we looked, there were also a, a large number of reductions at central office. We looked to how we could put that back in a restructured mode, and again, we looked to restore the middle school model. I think this slide helps to drive home that point. What you see under the fiscal year '21 eliminated positions, that, that was, that's what was cut last June, right? And if we took the approach of saying, "We want to now come back to you this year and restore those positions," our budget would be 900, approximately 945,000 more than it is that we need to. And if we need, if we took that approach, we would be coming in front of you and saying that we need a 5.21% increase for Wenam. And we have worked with the towns, we have worked with our leadership team to say, "How might we return this capacity without just simply restoring what was cut?" And so, what you see under the fiscal year '22, um, breakdown, is that we did bring some things back, but we brought far fewer things back in new ways. They are not one-to-one types of, um, restorations, um, but we believe that when we bring these back, we will be able to restore the vast majority of capacity that was lost last June. A quick example of this is, uh, under this, this proposed reorganization, um, what we looked at is we had six teaching positions basically in June, and we had six new positions in this current budget, but they are, but they, the same six positions exist. We were able to create new capacity within the district without adding anything to the budget by simply rethinking how we do things and restructuring. Um, so this is an example of that. I think it's also important to note that as we did this restructuring, we are moving the seats and the, the job descriptions of, of, um, some of our teachers, um, but that there are no layoffs, no cuts for teachers. Again, we had six positions, and we still have six positions, which is rethinking how we're using them. And again, part of the value in approaching this, this way, is that we are not incurring the 945,000 it would take to put back the old model. Um, and particularly as it relates to, to literacy, one of the things that has been a challenge and a concern is our literacy outcomes. So, even with those larger expenses, what we were seeing, outcomes were not what we wanted them to be. So, we have spent a lot of time really rethinking this, restructuring this, um, and feel that we have got a model in place that is going to serve the students of Hamilton and Wenam well. Next slide. Next, I wanted to just tie back into the OPEP conversation that, that you have heard from a number of different places. Um, OPEP stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, um, and that OPEP is, is related to the town's liabilities to fund the health insurance costs of future employees, or, of future retirees. Those folks are in our district today, who will eventually retire, and so we need to be setting aside money for their costs. Um, the current OPEP liability is over 40 million dollars, and the fiscal year '22 budget is the, the first attempt to have funded this future liability. Uh, we are starting with 100,000 initial startup, and we are also currently paying, um, into Essex Retirement, same types of liabilities. When we get caught up there, we will also add in this money to help, um, ensure that we, we get our OPEP liability under control. Uh, there has been a lot of money coming into the district through, um, as a result of COVID, to help offset some of the remarkable expenses that we had to absorb this year. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, anything that you see where it's been expended, um, the types of things that we spend that money on were tents for outside, to provide outdoor learning spaces, um, for PPE, for, um, updates to our HVAC system, and for the purchase of technology. Um, there is one grant that we currently have appropriated to us, which is the S2 grant. We had an option of taking those funds in fiscal year '21, or in fiscal year '22. We have chosen to take those funds in fiscal year '22. The current operating budget does not have anything in it related to COVID expenses, so PPE, tents, uh, whatever, additional pool testing if that becomes necessary. So, we are holding the S2 money to address those costs for next year. And I, I just want to close with this thought that growth is never by mere chance, it is the result of working together, and I, I know everyone in this, um, meeting knows that growth doesn't happen by accident and, and positive momentum forward. But I really wanted to focus on the, the last part of this quote, and, um, the, that we will move through this, this oftentimes remarkably complex landscape and solve the complex problems in front of us when we work together. Um, I would really like to thank the, the Boards of Selectmen, the FinCom, the Towns Administrator on behalf of both myself, the School Committee and the District, for the, the partnership that they have shown us this year, and for the collaborative work that has been engaged in to meet two really important goals. First and foremost, our superintendent, ensuring that we are well-positioned to provide every student that walks through our doors a quality education, um, and to do so in a way that is fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of all towns. Thank you very much for your attention, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if necessary as the meeting continues.
So, I will now entertain a motion that the town votes to appropriate the sum of 21,998,714 dollars to defray the town's expenses for fiscal year 2022, a 12-month period beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, including expenses for the town and regional school district, all for the purpose, all for the purposes, and in the amounts as set forth in Article One of the warrant, and for such purposes to raise for taxation the sum of 18,973,765 dollars. Of cour-, yeah, I, I'd be happy to explain that.
My, my question is on the hold comment. It wasn't clear, I think there was some confusion, I thought there was going to be delineation of some lines.
Yes.
So, if we wanted to hold on the education budget for discussions, that's still possible to do prior to the vote.
Yes. So, what I've just done is to ask for a motion. So, move. The motion having been made now, what we'll do, and really what Mr. Purdy will do, will be to go through line item by line item, the budget, and if you, or if anyone else wishes to comment on anything, you'll have that opportunity as we go through line item to line item. Stand or to sit and say loudly, "Hold," and then we'll go back to any or every item that we have hold on, and it would be at that point where you could comment, ask questions, or present an amendment.
Thank you for that clarification, I apologize for the confusion.
No, that's perfectly okay. And the other gentleman, I take it you're, that answered the question that you were calling to raise?
Yeah.
Okay. Take it away.
I have my water with me now. Okay, the way that this is traditionally done, uh, done and moved forward, I will read the line item number and then go to the total expense, uh, for that particular line item. So, let's, let's get started. Line item 114, moderator, $50. Line item 122, selectmen, 11,974 dollars. Line item 123, town administrator, 146,459 dollars. Finance, line item 131, finance and advisory committee, 250 dollars. Line item 132, reserve fund, uh, 125,000 dollars. Line item 139, municipal audit, 30,000 dollars. Line item 141, assessors, 77,854 dollars, plus the tax title expense of 10,000 dollars. Line item 149, the finance department, 200, 267,904 dollars. Line item 151, town council, legal, 90,000 dollars. Line item 155, information and technology, 109,208 dollars. Line item 160, town hall, 238,446. And just a note, I want to make a note on that in your notes, it states, special project manager at 76,801 dollars a year for 19, uh, 19 hours a year. That is a full-time position as the, uh, administrative director of administrative services of the community. Line item 161, town clerk, 91,765 dollars. Line item 170, planning and land use, 76,722 dollars. Line item 192, facilities and management, 173,309. Line item 195, town report, 6,500 dollars. Line item 199, iron rail property, 48,100 dollars. Total general government, 1,505,42. dollars. Protection of persons and property, 210, police, one million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Line item 225, fire, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, five, eight hundred and ten, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Line item 240, permanent inspectional services, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Line item 294, tree warden, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total person, protection of persons and property, two million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Item schools, line item 310, regional school district, Hamilton Regional School District, eleven million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Three twenty, regional vocational school district, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Total education, twelve million, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. Okay. Department of Public Works, four hundred and, four twenty-two, highway department, one million, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Four twenty-three, snow removal, one hundred and six thousand, fifty dollars. Line item 424, street lighting, eighteen thousand dollars. Line item 433, refuse, refuse collection and disposal, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Line item 491, cemetery, eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Total Department of Public Works, one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. Health and Human Services, 510, Board of Health, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. 541, Council on Aging, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Line item 543, Veterans Department, sixteen thousand, twenty-two dollars. Total Health and Human Services, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and Culture and Recreation, line item 620, the Joint Library, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-three. Line item 640, Joint Recreation Program, that's one of the, the joint with Hamilton, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Line item 691, Historic District Commission, two hundred dollars. Total Culture and Recreation, one million, eighty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-one. Fixed charges, intergovernmental, eight hundred and forty, eight hundred and eight four oh, twenty-five thousand, fifty-three dollars. Line item 911, Retirement, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, twenty-one dollars. Line, line item 914, Employee Benefits, nine hundred, nine hundred and five, five, nine hundred thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Line item 916, Medical Medicare, sixty-five thousand dollars. Nine hundred and forty-five, General Insurance, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Other post-employment, other post-employment benefits, OPEP so-called, seventy thousand dollars. Total fixed charges, two million, eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven Town debt, principal and interest, 710, principal, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Line item 751, interest, fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. Total town debt, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Total general fund, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-seven. Item number 450, Water Fund, five hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Total general and water plus the water fund, twenty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Okay, there we go. So we've got several holes there. I think the first of those had to do with Town Council.
I just want the, I just want everyone to be aware that those ninety thousand dollars that were two years prior were safety obstacles. That's a fifty percent increase in two years. We have a situation in the town. We don't know what it cost. And I urge the Select Board to embrace transparency, release the documents that have been held for so long from the executive sessions and break down our legal expenses so we know what the situation two years ago is costing us and whether or not we can put that back to the individual who's billing, who's causing this bill to the town. Thank you.
Okay. One, I'm going to ask folks to hold applause. We're in a legislative session here, and we'll go one at a time here. Now, obviously, we've got two other holes here. I'm assuming that there will be more discussion on the school department than on, on the general insurance. So I'd like to do general insurance first. Hearing no objection. Who raised that question? Okay.
So same issue here, we look at our general insurance, and we're seeing from 2019, it goes up three percent. The next year it was up six point three percent, seven point four percent, and ten percent this year. The velocity of the change is picking up in this environment. And again, I do believe this is related to the situation that we have, and again, I urge transparency. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on either of those two holes? Hearing none. The third hole was on the, on the school committee. And I think there were more than one person. So I want to make sure that folks understand the town meeting's flexibility regarding the school budget is somewhat more limited than other financial articles. And although many of you know this, school budgets are developed by the school committee. Detailed discussions occur at school committee budget hearings, and when those budgets are presented to town, as a general rule, the meeting is limited to voting on the total budget, the bottom line. Town meeting, for example, couldn't start discussions about whether we ought to have AP Italian in the high school or something like that. We're dealing with, as a general rule, with numbers. So we've got three choices. We can approve the requested amount, approve a different amount, higher or lower. And if a different amount is voted by town meeting, or if no amount were voted, for example, it will vote down, then the school committee goes back to revisit that number and the issue. And the school committee can accept that number or not accept the number, and if it's different, it'll come back to the town meeting. And in some circumstances, we might even need a special town meeting to see if the town approved budget and appropriate additional funds if someone was asking for more money than what has been appropriated, than what we've gotten in the warrant. And at one other point, if the town meeting, and I'm just anticipating what might happen, if the town meeting votes to increase the school budget by any substantial amount, there may not be sufficient town funds to cover those additional costs, and this could require a proposition two and a half override vote in order for the town to have a balanced budget. And until such a vote is held and passed by the voters, the town will not have a balanced budget. And obviously, if that happened and an override failed, the town wouldn't have a balanced budget, and subsequent town meetings would be required then to balance the budget. I don't know what the proposals might be. I just want to be sure that people are aware that, that we, that if things would have to go back to the school committee and could require additional town meetings and could require a two and a half vote if in fact you decided to, using an example, increase the school budget by a million dollars in vote favor. So with those preliminary remarks, we've got, again, we've got someone in the back there. Please identify yourself, your address, and then if you've got a comment or a question or a proposed amendment, please proceed.
Thank you, and thank you for your grease before. My name is Jennifer Jankovic. My husband Dan now, and I live here with our three children. Leanne is eighteen and fourteen, and Than is eleven, and my parents who are seventy-six and eight-four. We moved here in 2013 and lived in 36 Topsville Road, and our property taxes increased forty percent in that same time period. While we are a family with children, others here may not be as interested in that, in the school budget portion, but we're all here because we're interested in the effective and responsible management of our town, which includes our school budget. And so my concerns are related to the following issues. The school budget continues to increase every year since 2017, increasing the hardworking families' property taxes without accountability for expenditures. After such a significant increase of eight point five seven percent last year, once again, citizens of our small town are being asked to approve an additional one point eight million dollar increase in the school budget that results in an increase of three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars to win an assessment. The five-year average increase to the school budget that I most recently had was five point five percent, placing an undue burden on all who live in this town. This year, there's an additional twelve point five percent in administration costs, which comes to one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, and a one hundred and fifty-one percent increase in professional development costs, which comes to three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Numerous citizens have raised the concern that these increases are going toward middle management, curriculum directors, public relations and communications, to the detriment of actual teaching and caring for our children, even after a recent audit recommended a leaner central office. These curriculum managers were removed from the last budget. In order to become more fiscally responsible, we need teachers, not middle management. A four point four eight percent increase is too high after we just had an eight point five seven percent increase last year, and we recognize that out of that one point eight million dollar increase, a million is just for level services. And, but the remaining needs to be evaluated. And in addition, while the budget increases year after year, the enrollment has decreased year after year. The warrant needed a strong optimism for return to normal enrollments, but many in the community are warning the school committee that that, their estimations are way off. To even have this conversation around the school budget at a town meeting where the budgets are interconnected is very challenging, and so much hard work has been done. I recognize that. But since the school budget is not separated from the town budget, our only option is to vote down the entire budget. And many of us believe very strongly that if we do not make a concerted effort to have the school committee reevaluate this budget, we will continue on this unsustainable path and force out the very families you are desiring in this community. Thus, based on the reasons outlined above, recognizing that level services of about a million dollars cannot be touched, recognizing there are additional funds that will come to the district through the American Recovery Act that can help the school committee be creative in how it allocates resources, I want to make the following motion. I move to separate the proposed school, school budget as presented in line number 310 from the general town budget under Article 1. I move.
Now, there's been a motion to separate the school committee, excuse me, the school budget from Article 1. Early on, it was my view that that kind of motion might be procedurally unacceptable because it isn't to raise or to lower the amount. However, Hamilton dealt with the issue this morning, if anybody was watching on TV, and town moderator made a judgment that, that that vote was procedurally acceptable. I've spoken to Town Council about this, and now believe that that motion is procedurally acceptable provided that when we, that if the town votes to separate the budget, the school budget from Article 1, that it is then an up or down vote, that we don't then have set amendments to the school budget that's been separated from Article 1. So I just want to be sure that everybody understands that I am making the preliminary ruling that that motion is perfectly acceptable, assuming that when we, that if it's voted favorably by the town, when we then vote on the school budget, it's up or it's down. Now, there are some other folks, perhaps, who wish to speak on this issue?
My name is Jennifer Carr. I live at 5 Meridian Road in Wyndham. I have a daughter in the seventh grade and a son in third grade. Had to think about it a second. I think it's important to not only look at the numbers in this budget, although I do not believe the increases we have sustained over the next two years are sustainable. We must also look at what we do not get in this budget. The superintendent made the argument that this budget is restoring lost capacity, and yet we're losing things. We're losing our master degree reading specialists. People with ten to twenty years of experience are going away. They're taking perhaps coordinator positions, but I know of at least one who's leaving because she doesn't want to take on the role that the district wants her to take. Instead, what we're getting is teaching assistants, part-time teaching assistants. These do not have the qualifications of our reading specialists, although I do believe teaching assistants are an important part of our district. We're losing our ninth grade honors program. So if you have kids in the eighth grade who want to move up to ninth grade in Excel, it's been said that that program is going away. And more, most importantly, we're not getting our sixth grade language curriculum back. It was discussed at the school committee that getting sixth grade language back in the middle school could be done at no cost. We would have had to move FTTs around. But that wasn't something our school district wanted to do, and so our sixth graders are losing curriculum for a second year in a row. As a community, we need to-
A reminder that it's a three-minute-
I'm last sentence. As a community, we need to decide what's important. Student-facing teachers and members of our administration are what are important. Instructional coaches who teach our teachers how to teach are not something we should be voting in this year. Thank you very much.
Okay. How many more people are, I can see three, obviously. Are there more people who are going to be interested? Because I'm just trying to sequence whether I will ask for a vote first on separation. And since there appear to be only three more people that want to talk on this issue at this point, four, five, are there more hands? Six. I'm going to ask folks to be brief, three minutes at the max, but, and to be non-duplicative when you present your, your comments.
Hi. My name is Deb Evans. I live twelve Quarter Street here in Wenam. I am a former FinCon member and a former school committee member, and I do want to point out, this is the first year in the years that I've been at the towns, that these three boards, the select board, the finance committee, and the school committee came to town meeting with an agreed upon budget, and I just want to say thank you for the effort that that took, and quite frankly, for our town, that's a massive service. We're not making decisions about that here. They've been working on this for six months plus. I also have to say, and this is very, very brief, but I appreciate the issues that people are raising that affect them personally or their belief system about education, but I can tell you, from being a person that has been on the school committee, not recently, I don't have the kids in the schools any longer, but there is absolute transparency at all of these meetings, except for executive sessions. There are no private meetings that the school committee has. Every meeting is spoken to the public, or in this case, zoomed to the public. It may not be a convenient way to get information, but as a parent, this is really a very late time. It's a seven-month, eight-month process, and I appreciate the issues people are raising, but this process has been open and communicative since the absolute beginning of the budget season. Whenever that was, it was a long time ago. So I feel like to question these things at this point in the process is a detriment to our community and to the volunteer hours, countless thousands of them, that have gone into bringing a budget to town meeting and for the schools. This budget actually is within, it's an under two and a half percent increase to our town, which hasn't happened in the foreseeable past at all. So that's why I really would like to see us move forward with the things that our volunteer boards have brought to town meeting for action and not second-guessed decisions that could have been waited on three, six, nine months ago. Thank you.
And thank you. And let's have this person, this woman who's here to my, and then we've got some folks in the back, okay? So you'll be next then. You decide amongst yourselves who votes first.
Hi. I'm Michelle Bailey. I live at two Remington Road. I also have a-
You know, it might be helpful as you say-
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Sorry. Very used to wearing a mask. My name is Michelle Bailey. I live at two Remington Road. I am also a member of the school committee, and before we vote on this, I'd like the superintendent to have an opportunity to address several items that I have to say that are not true and to clarify what is planned for our budget next year.
I'm going to, I'm going to hold that until the end after we've got all comments. Obviously, the superintendent's had an opportunity to speak, but not really to respond to questions yet. So I'm going to let the folks in the back, so we've got a full list of what those questions might be, and then give our superintendent a brief period of time to respond to them.
I will be very brief. Mary Montgomery Copel, forty Perkins Street. I wanted to respond to Ms. Evans' comment that this has been a several months-long process. There have been hundreds of parents contacting the school committee and the superintendent and actively participating or attempting to participate in these discussions, budget hearings, the Zoom meetings. We've been part of this, and this is not last minute. You know, the previous three or six-minute decisions where we're concerned about certain lineup, line items, they've been brought up quite frequently, and transparency, uh, to the, I'm not going to say this is still in plan as I want to, sorry. There's no one coming to these comments lightly, and many of us voicing concerns come to support the school committee in year after year after year. So I, I just wanted to push back against the idea that some of us are coming up at the eleventh hour with these concerns. These concerns have been raised for months.
We've got two more people in the back first.
Hi. Natalie Bowers, sixteen Quarter Street, a parent of two nine-year-olds at Beaker Elementary. I, I love Wenam, and I'm super happy here. I'm not even that passionate about this budget discussion. I care about my kids. This is the first time that I'm commenting on an issue publicly. What I'm seeing is the administration claiming that they are collaborating and working with everyone, and what I also see is a group of four hundred parents that are active, smart, qualified, and they are upset about what's happening. I support that. I think that we should listen. The quote that Ms. Bannion's put on her presentation about growth comes through collaboration was a little bit ironic and somewhat insulting to those parents. If we are truly collaborating, the parents should be listened to. I am absolutely in favor of us voting separately on this whole budget and hopefully creating time for real collaboration to happen. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the back, and then we, we really are going to wrap this up, I understand, and, and going to vote on the question of separation.
Hi. Dan Pastorero, seventeen Quarter Street. I just had a procedural question on the, the motion. So if it's, if it's split out and it can only be an up or down vote, I suspect that there's probably a desire to reduce line items rather than increase line items. So are, are, my question is just a procedural question. Could she amend her motion to include a separation and whatever else they're looking for? That's, I don't know if that's a question of town councilor for.
Yeah, that's the very reason why I wanted to be careful about, as a general rule, Dan, you are right that, that a motion on a, on an item where there's been a hold would be to increase it by a dollar or decrease it by a dollar or something along those lines. However, when we're talking about the school committee, if there is a distinction here in terms of if it's voted down, it's going to go back to the school committee at that point in order to determine what happens next. So from a procedural standpoint, that motion hasn't been made, and I think for good reason. And the goal is to get the, the goal from the person who has made that motion is to get things back to the school committee, apparently, where things could be up or down and the line items could be changed in any event. The gentleman here in front.
Hi. I'm Angus West from Waldorf Road in Wenam, a lifetime resident. I have two kids now, adults. I have two sort of broader issues. I'm not going to vote for the separation or turning it down this year, but I do think a loud message should be sent to the school committee that soon we will be voting down the school committee budget, and I think we need a reality check at the town. I'm a finance guy, and I've been looking at the numbers for this, and I said, we have a thirty-nine million dollar school budget. Thirty-nine million dollars. There are five hundred and fifty-eight Wenam kids that cost us net of all the other things twelve million dollars. The actual cost of educating one of the sixteen to eighteen hundred kids is twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Twenty-one five. And I, and I've seen people sending their kids to St. John's Prep. There is a point at which public education should not cost what private education costs. You're going to drive people out of the town. My wife comes from a town in New Jersey where the taxes are so high, people move in for the high school and leave. Everyone who's elderly has to go. And we're getting to that point in Wenam. So at thirty-nine million dollars, twenty-one five before the nets, that some of the offset we get on the, from the state, I'm very concerned on the trend. I think we've got to find, in a declining student population, a way to actually lower the budget. Three hundred people working in the school district, one hundred and fifty of them are teachers. There's got to be some room somewhere in this. Secondly, I heard that it's a forty million dollar unfunded health benefit. Forty million dollars. That's twelve million bucks to this town. The finance committee, by the way, did a fabulous job when I asked them earlier. We also have our own internal, forget the school district, we have a four million dollar pension deficit in the town as well. So that's sixteen million dollars. So we have almost a full year's budget that we are underfunded that we need to start paying. We just grew down our tax from eight hundred something thousand to the bare minimum of two fifty to keep this tax from being an override. This is not sustainable, and I'm not going to ask us to vote down the school budget this year, but if the school committee, which represents with all due respect, parents with students, and not a lot of the people who are not in that category, that they're talking to the choir, so next year, I hope that the message comes from the finance committee and from the town, the school committee has to radically rethink of its next three to five-year plan and find a way to cut its expenses.
And I apologize. Go right ahead. And then we will move forward for all.
Hi. Carrie Jelsma, thirty-five, Pull Top Drive, also a member of the finance committee. I have spent many volunteer hours deliberating on this year's budget. It has been a collaborative process. I also appreciate that budgeting and local town government is not a static process. In fact, right now, we are in the middle of town meeting, which is a unique direct democracy that exists in the United States. So I appreciate the ongoing deliberation and comments that have been made about how we are going to vote our budget in this year and manage our town, and I don't, I also support not suppressing public engagement. Thank you.
Okay. Now, a question was raised about whether or not the superintendent should get an opportunity. I'm looking down at the superintendent. The gentleman in the back has just made a motion to call the question. A motion to call the question means to end the debate and, and to vote. So, and, under the rules, I must take that motion up now. And it requires a two-thirds- And it requires a two-thirds vote. The gentleman in the back, if I were to give the superintendent two minutes to respond, would that, would you be willing to withdraw that motion? Two minutes. You're on the clock, as they say. Two minutes, as they say, you're on the clock, as our patriots were.
A lot there to respond to in two minutes, but a couple of points of clarification that I think may be confusing for folks. One of the documents that is out there is DESC categories, and you do see a twelve point five percent increase in administration. I want to let you know that the vast, vast majority of that increase is due to the reclassification of technology. We had our accounting software, student management system software, and then instructional technology category, and we properly reclassified it this year to administration. So there has not been a large increase to administration at all. In fact, the, there has been significant reductions in terms of administrative positions. The positions that we are putting in for curriculum instruction, last year, we had two point seven five administrators. We have added it back to this budget, point seven, and we are elevating teacher leaders into the instructional coach models that will be working directly in classrooms with teachers and with students. We have been thoughtful, plentiful in a plan that includes supporting classrooms and supporting students in intervention, and we are feeling very positive about the approach that we have put into place. We are actually increasing the number of people that will be available to deliver intervention for students, and we are maintaining the expertise that we need in terms of diagnosis and planning treatment in a way that is more cost efficient, but in, in fact, we believe it improves our ability to deliver a strong learning program at the elementary level.
Thank you very much. And now, we're going to take a vote. Now, this vote is to separate out of Article One the school budget. If it passes, we then-
Well, the gentleman withdrew.
Just in case everybody didn't hear, Mr. Dodge, the motion to call the question was, has been withdrawn, but the effect of it is still the same. We are, we're now going to vote. So the motion that we are going to vote on now is a motion to separate the proposed school budget from the- From Article- From Article One. That's, we, we need a majority vote on that, and I'm going to have to step down so that I can see, because I've got a couple of very large monitors that get in my way here. This is a majority vote. You vote only with your card, and you must remain seated so that we can see this. Those who wish to separate the budget, please vote now. Try to speak as loudly as I can. Those who do not wish to separate the budget. I'm going to do that one more time, and then we're going to decide whether we need to vote it. Those who wish to separate this item. Those who do not wish to separate this item. So I don't think we've got a clear enough vote. We do have our town clerk here who has volunteers who will do the hand count of this vote. The procedure is exactly the same. You'll, you'll be seated. I apologize. Let's try it again. I could not absolutely say whether or not a majority voted for or against that last motion, and so our, our clerk has volunteers who will do a hand count. The vote will be done in exactly the same way, except that you will, there will be someone who will go row by row and tell you when to put your voting card down. You want to be sure that your vote gets counted. So first, again, we'll do those who are in favor, and then we'll do those who are opposed as soon as our town clerk tells us we're ready to go. And again, if we had had the clickers working, we wouldn't have this problem, but technical difficulties are part of what happens in life.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
We are. Are we ready?
I'm ready, yes.
Okay. So those who are in favor of the motion to separate the school budget, please raise your cards, and as people tell you- your cards, and, as people tell you, you can lower your card, wait for a teller to tell you, you can lower your card. I see some people back there with their cards still up. I want to be... Catherine, okay. Have the tellers completed their work? Remember, you can only vote once. Okay, and now, as soon as the tellers are ready... Are we ready, Trudy? Thank you very much. So now, those who oppose the motion to separate, and please, again, leave your cards up until the tellers have a chance. And have the folks over there who still have their cards up, have they been counted? And everybody, thanks for your patience. So, the town clerk tells me that there are ninety-three votes in favor of separating the school budget, and there are seventy-four votes against. So, the motion has passed, and now, we will vote, and first, we'll find out if we can do it without, without using the tellers. And now, we will vote on, as we explained, on the motion itself, up or down on the school budget. So the vote now is either to say yes to the school budget, unamended in terms of numbers, or no. Yes, sir.
I would just like to clarify, or ask the question, that we exclude from this the Essex Aggie hundred and seventy thousand dollar number.
Yes, it was my, it was certainly my understanding that we were talking about the regional school district. We are not talking about the, about Essex Aggie. I see the person who made the motion nodding affirmatively on that, but I think I would like to be sure that that was, in fact, your motion to separate the school budget exclusive of Essex Aggie. And, and the answer was yes from the proponent there. So, we are now going to do an up or down vote for the school budget exclusive of the allocation for Essex Aggie. Those who are in favor of the, the budget as proposed, Mr. Purdy? I think it'd be good to read the number for the record.
Just for clarification, so the vote will be, excuse me, on the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District, eleven million eight hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Are we all in agreement that that's the right number? Okay, all those in favor, please raise... No, that was exactly what I said at the beginning here, was that once, that, that...
To clarify, what you said was that we wouldn't change the number. That doesn't mean that we can't discuss the issue.
Point taken. So, any discussion on this will be limited, you can't change the number in, in the, to be as simply as possible. And these comments have to be not duplicative of what we've heard previously.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Excuse me, David Pledo, one fifty-three Topsfield Road. I'm also a member of the school committee. I really love seeing everyone out here today, really taking an interest in, you know, our schools and our town. I just want to take a brief second and actually just recognize Peter Walczek. He's a school committee member from the town of Wenham who is actually not choosing to return, and he's just given three years of service to our town, so I just wanted to recognize him before I start.
Three minutes.
Excuse me. Thank you. Like I said, I love seeing everyone here discussing this. You know, when I try to do my best in getting back to people when they email me, I speak to everyone at baseball games, football games, wherever you guys see me around town, always happy to discuss the issues. One thing I think that needs to be sort of pointed out here is that this year has been an extraordinary year. The amount of comments, emails I got from people in this town are exponential to the five years previously that I served on the school board. That being said, a lot of the issues being brought up today are really being looked at in a silo. And I want to just sort of remind people that things that are coming up that we're voting on, on this budget that's incredibly hard to keep below the levy limit in the town, you know, things like funding an OPEB, right, funding OPEB. That's something that's been actually being asked for us of five years. This has been something that's been in motion for multiple, multiple years now, right? There's a lot of things going on here that have just been set in motion. Do I hear you when you say that you don't like the fact that there's forty thousand dollars going to a public relations department? Yes, I hear you. And if you've actually been watching the school committee meetings, you'll see that I don't really love spending that money either. The thing is, coming into this year, we hired, we had to hire a new superintendent during the middle of a pandemic, who was basically given zero chance to succeed. And we had to cut so much staff last year in fear of losing all that Chapter Seventy money, that they had to do it with their hands tied behind their back. That's the only reason that I voted to approve the public relations in the first place, because with everything else, I knew I needed that superintendent to do to make the best possible choices on the fly over the course of the year. She needed help in getting word out to the public. Again, I don't like it. I've already said that moving forward next year, it's something that's going to be brought up again, and believe me, it will. But a lot of these issues that are coming up are things that have been happening for years. The idea of restructuring our early literacy, right, is something none of us want to do, because we, the hardest part of this job is realizing that there are real humans attached to re, to reallocation. We know there are jobs that are on the line here, and that the money's going to be moved around, but the fact of the matter is, this data proves that this current system isn't working. And in order to lessen future expenses of out-of-district costs, we need to make changes right now, right?
Okay, well, that's...
Again, just...
Wrapping it up.
Right. So, and again, these are things that we've been talking about for years. While it seems like it's something that's been really happening immediately, it's not. So please just keep that in mind.
Have we got somebody else who wishes to speak? Michelle. And there's a gentleman in the back.
Thank you.
Non-duplicative comments.
I have a couple of things. One is that I would appreciate, and I understand there is some written script about what happens if there is a no vote on the budget. And also, I'm confused, because I do believe it is the obligation of the town meeting to vote a budget, and it sounds to me, voting no is voting no budget, and I would like to understand, if town council can please elaborate on what that will mean if the schools have no budget approved on July first. Does that mean we have a zero one-twelfth budget? Or does it, what, like, what does this mean? And I don't, I think it's important for the people in the tent to understand what a no means, because even I'm quite confused on that. I thought for sure that we would be voting a number today. Thank you.
We are voting either to approve the number that has been separated out or not. And if there's a negative vote, then it goes back to the school committee for its consideration. I turn to, our town council is nodding. Is there anything you wish to add to that?
Mr. Moderator, Joel Bard, Town Council. Traditionally, there is a number proposed. In this sense, the sense of the meeting, and even the moderator's sense, is that the speakers are sending a message rather than a number. And in either event, if the budget is voted down entirely or reduced by, let's say, even a hundred thousand dollars, not a million dollars, it still has to go back to the school committee. So the effect is the same, and a vote down of the budget would have the same effect as reducing it by, let me say, a random number. So either way, the school buddy would, the school committee would have to reconsider the budget.
And the school committee could take such action to increase the budget, decrease the budget, or make no change in the budget.
I'm sorry, but excuse me, but because we have no number, we're not given any direction...
I understand the question.
It's guaranteeing that we will be back at a town meeting, and I'm curious as to what the expense will be.
That's correct. That's correct. Well, it's, actually, it's, it's, it's correct if we vote no. Okay.
I'm Dano, I'm Dano Jakonovich, husband of Jennifer Jakonovich. We've talked a lot about numbers and head office, and David made the point, this is hard, and we've been working on it for five years, and he made the statement, it needs to be done now. And I just want to say, we've pulled two of our kids out of the public school, and I think anybody who can scrape together enough money to get their kids into an in-person learning experience has tried to do that, and there's no way we're coming back, and there's no way they're coming back. So the proposal that there will be more students next year is totally false. So we're proposing, the budget here is based on assuming that there will be more kids, and we should have more money to pay for more kids. There won't be more kids.
We've got two folks back there, again. We've got a lot of people here. If you've got non-duplicative comments, I'm going to come down to two minutes each.
Jennifer Carr, five Meridian Road. I would like to respond to the fact that people say this budget was a collaboration. It wasn't. Parents have been screaming our full heads off for the last year. When the union called the teachers, eighty-six percent of our elementary teachers said no. Fourteen percent said that they were unsure. These are the people who are teaching our kids, who are on the front line, and they don't agree with this plan. I think we need to take both the parents' wants and needs, and the teachers' wants and needs into effect, and vote this budget down.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? One more person.
Yes, good afternoon, and thank, thank you for letting me speak. I didn't plan to speak today, but I feel compelled. I am a parent in the community. I have two children in the school district, one in elementary and one in middle. I am also...
Please identify yourself and your address.
My name is Ann Creelson, thirty-one Cherry Street. I also happen to work for the district in one of our elementary schools, and we've heard a number of complaints from parents here today, and it's a very vocal group, and I understand those concerns, and I understand how difficult this year has been for families. But there is a large number of parents who have not been so vocal, because we have been extraordinarily thankful for what the district has done for us. I have two children, my partner has two children, and we have, again, been so grateful for everything that has happened this year as far as getting our children back into the school, the way they were getting, the way things have gone. So I just want to say, as an educator, as someone who works for the district, despite what the last speaker said, I would like to vote this budget forward and feel strongly that in order to move forward, we need to do so. Thank you.
Okay. We're now going to try to vote. So having separated the school committee, I'm sorry, the school district excluding Essex Aggie out, those who are in favor of that budget item, please vote yes now. So I'm, I'm going to rule that it has been voted favorably by a majority. Okay, so we move on to Article Two. And folk... Oh, yeah, we got to do the town budget now. Folks, I know a lot of people want to, you know, it's getting a little bit later in the afternoon now, but we got to keep a quorum, so let's make sure that we get a few more things done. Yes, we now have to vote on Article One, on all matters other than the school district and including Essex Aggie. Did I get that correct, Jim? Any more discussion on that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Yes.
So, the, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the expense of the town budget by thirty-one thousand in Article One for the purpose of removing the five-year lease on the tractor, that we will address later in Article Two and Three.
So a motion has been made to exclude the lease item so that we'll only have to deal with a majority vote on the, on what's left of Article One. And so, unless there's further discussion on that... And assuming that there's a second... All of those who are in favor of excluding thirty-one thousand dollars from what's left of Article One, so as to take the lease item out of Article One, please vote now. All of those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, I still think we have to vote on what's left of Article One. Okay, so now, what we're doing is voting on everything else in Article One except the thirty-one thousand dollars that we just took out and the school budget ex, ex of Essex Aggie. All of those in favor? All of those opposed? All of those opposed? The ayes have it. That, that is a majority vote that's required, and I ruled that there is a majority vote. Article Two. I will entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer the sum of $316,000 from free cash to be used to balance the budget for the period July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
So moved.
The motion has been made, and, uh, do we have a second?
And Mr. Moderator?
Do we have a proposed amendment?
Yes, we do.
You're not ma-
No, I'm, I, as a matter of housekeeping and to explain, we, uh, took the $31,000 out of Article One so it would not be a two-thirds vote. I'd need to follow that up now with amend Article Two to reduce the free cash in that same amount of $31,000, and we will replace it in Article Three. But I'd like to amend Article Two to reduce it by the amount of the same $31,000. Thank you.
Any discussion on that? So we're now going to vote on the, on the amendment, uh, that has been made, and has it been seconded? So we're gonna vote on the amendment that's just been made to, following up on what we've just done, reduce the use of free cash in Article Two by $31,000. All of those in favor? All of those opposed? That's a majority vote. I ruled that the majority has voted in favor. We're on to Article Three. I apologize. We now have to vote on what's left of Article Two. Mr. Smirage will, uh, have this job next time. I see that he's taking notes. The notes are mostly on the things I've done wrong so far. If you need extra paper, just let me know. So now we're ready to vote on Article Two as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it by a majority. Now, we can do Article Three. The annual operating budget for the town for fiscal year 2021 was approved at the town meeting on July 11 with the use of free cash to subsidize operating revenues. This article seeks to use additional free cash for capital projects that would not have come before the town meeting in April. I'm sorry. That would have come before the town meeting in April had COVID-19 not had the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and staff looking to re-forecast and reduce the budget. An outline of the Future Capital Improvement Program budget can be found in the warrant book. I will now entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash such sums of money to fund the town's fiscal year 2021 capital improvement program, including the acquisition, equipping, and all other incidental and related costs of Item A through J in the amounts and for the purposes as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment. Sorry, I understand you need to move the motion first.
I think we've got to get the motion moved first. And Jim, I think you were going to move the motion?
So moved.
The motion has been moved. Do we have a second? And do we have a proposed amendment?
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to amend Article Three to the amount of $290,600 by reinserting the $31,000 five-year lease that we took out of Article One so that we could avoid the two-thirds vote there, and we'll insert it in Article Three here. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so that, um, that motion to amend is the first thing that we have to deal with. Any further discussion of that $31,000 item? Please-
It's over here to your right, the FinCom Committee?
Sorry about that.
So i- i- if you can explain it again, Mr. Cheeseman, so we can understand, again, from scratch, we're trying to understand. Thank you.
Out of Article One, we took the $31,000 for the five-year lease so that we would not have needed a two-thirds vote on the entire budget. Did not want to risk that vote. So I have, uh, out of Article Two, having passed Article One, out of Article Two, we also took the $31,000 out of free cash, and now as the third step where we need the two-thirds vote, we'll reinsert the $31,000 for the five-year lease into Article Three, bringing it up to $290,600.
So ju- just to be clear, you moved it from a two-thirds vote to a majority vote, back to a two-thirds vote?
No, we, I moved it, I'm, we voted to take it out of Article One, which would have caused a two-thirds vote for the entire article, that is, the entire budget, and have shifted it to Article Three, where we'll still need the two-thirds vote, but it is on just a limited number of items.
We will still need a two-thirds vote on this because it is, it is a lease obligation, but we wouldn't have needed a two-thirds vote on the entire operating budget.
Thanks, I got it, and it's a special for threes capital items. All right, thank you.
Okay. So, um, we haven't voted the amendment yet, though. So first, we have to vote the amendment to put back the $31,000. All of those in favor? Anyone opposed? The ayes have it by majority vote, and now we need a two-thirds vote on this Article Three as amended. So I would ask if there's any further discussion?
I have a question. Sorry, I just hope this is the right place to ask it. It's Sutu Petrolia, 68th Road, and my question is on the library roof replacement. Um, voting that, is that settled, is that, are there any discussion about putting solar on that roof? Is that like a set number, the roof is done, or is that just a number that you're putting towards that, pretend that project this year?
So we've got a question on the roof replacement, and so Jim, if you're the right person?
I guess so. Thank you for the question. So last year, at our October meeting, we voted $75,000 for a roof replacement, and we're coming back again for another $75,000, and let me do my best to explain. So, we voted $75,000. Part of that, a major part of that, was a cost that is attributed to Hamilton. So of that $75,000, last year, last October, Hamilton's share of that cost was $61,333. Wenham's share of that cost was $31,657. Wenham's, uh, excuse me, Hamilton was 65.95%, Wenham is 34%. So, since that initial quote was made approximately a year ago now, it has, uh, the, the, the quote now, after further review of the needs of the library, and it now also includes the rec department, which has a flat roof that needs to be replaced. The total cost for this project is now $310,000. So with our, our Wenham dollars of $31,657, and this $75,000, we are going to contribute to the total cost of the project $106,600, $600, approximately back to that 34%. So that's, it is somewhat confusing because we're doing 275, but last year it was a portion to Hamilton and Wenham. This 75 represents Wenham's total share of the 300 and, um, $310,000. Hope that clarifies that issue.
Thank you, but no. Um, is there, is that a settled project, or are we still discussing putting solar on those roofs?
I'm, I'm sorry, you have to, one more time.
Yes, thank you. Okay, the audience answered the question. We're good. Thanks.
Okay, then we're ready to vote. All those in favor? Well, there's a gentleman back there, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, Dan Pascaro, 17th Quarter. I'm also a member of the planning board here in town, and I have, unfortunately, another procedural question. Since we moved this item from Article One to Article Three, does that now require a two-thirds majority for every single item in Article Three? So, if, is that what we're saying? So if we don't have a two-thirds majority on this vote, then the entire article fails?
Yes. As would be the case in Article One. As would have been the case in Article-
So is there-
The presence of a lease, of a five-year lease, requires a two-thirds vote, and since that was-
Okay, but Articles, but subparts A, B, C, D, and E here only require a simple majority vote, is that right?
Not once we have, not once we have put the, if they were taken up individually, which we're not going to do, you are correct, that they would each require only a majority vote. But now that the $31,000 has to find its ways, that lease has to find its upwaist place somewhere, it's here for, it's, this now is a two-thirds vote on this item.
Okay, so, so if I understand this right, because we've moved this into Article Three, we've now raised the threshold for every one of these items to a two-thirds majority approval?
Except it's only one vote.
I understand that. So, is there a reason why we can't move this lease to a standalone article and have its own two-thirds vote?
We didn't do it that way. We've got it amended, we're ready to vote.
Can I move to amend the amendment? And can I just-
Sure you can.
The reason, the reason I'm, I'm saying this is because there's a very, not that any of these things aren't unimportant, but Article E here is the funding for the townwide master plan, which the, the planning board has, has put forward here, and I don't want to see this article fail because we don't reach a two-thirds majority, because at the last minute, we've thrown in a lease item that is gonna raise the quantum of the vote.
I, I, I most certainly understand your concern, um, and yes, we, we could further amend this. I, I wonder if I might, uh, uh, we could also take a straw vote on whether or not, on this item.
That's fine.
I wonder if we could take a straw vote, just since the gentleman has raised that. All of those in favor of this item? All of those opposed? Dan?
Thank you, I don't think we need to amend.
That's the, that's the straw vote footnote in the town meeting. Okay, so now we're ready to vote on Article Three as it's been amended, all of the, and we need a two-thirds vote, all of those in favor? Anyone opposed? We don't have, we have our two-thirds vote, and we can move on to the so-called consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda, um, we may be able to expedite this by voting for Four, Five, Six, and Seven altogether. They're routine articles appearing each year and about which there's generally little or no debate. Therefore, I'll ask the meeting whether it would like to take all such articles together, which will appro, which- I'm sorry, did I, is someone? I, just give, let me, let me finish the script first. For each article, I'll read the article number in general purpose. If you want to consider that article separately, let me know that. Article Four proposes acceptance of cemetery trust and other funds. Five proposes a transfer of $6,000 from cemetery maintenance funds to the Highway Department for costs related to the department's maintenance of cemeteries. Article Six proposes to transfer $35,000 from water operating budget to water capital reserve for future infrastructure. Article Seven proposes acceptance of Chapter 90 funds and authorizes the town to undertake major road projects qualifying for such funding. I heard no holds. I'd entertain a motion that Articles Four through Seven be approved as print, as printed in the warrant. Second?
So, so moved from the FinCom.
And a second? All in favor? I ruled that there is a majority vote as needed on those consent items. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, did I not call for the noes? All those in favor? All of those opposed? Okay, we're unanimous. Article Eight. Transfer of water surplus for sick-time buyback account for a retiring employee. And I'll entertain a motion that Article Eight be approved as printed in the warrant.
So moved.
Do we need discussion on this? I don't see anyone standing on that, so all of those in favor? Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Article Nine. I'll read this as fast as I can, folks. This article proposes appropriation of the Community Preservation Act budget for the upcoming fiscal year, including reservations for each of the three purposes of the Act: open space, including land for recreational use, historic resources, and community housing, as well as for debt service and administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. This year, the Community Preservation Committee has also recommended appropriations from the Community Preservation Fund for a number of projects. By way of background, the town adopted the-
It's cold.
I'm sorry? Did someone speak?
That was me over here, I had my mic on.
Okay. A hot mic problem. By way of background, the town adopted the Community Preservation Act in 2005. The town assesses a 3% surcharge on the tax levy on real property for community preservation purposes, and also receives state matching funds. Each year, the Community Preservation Committee evaluates the town's community preservation needs, and a recommendation from the committee is required for the appropriation of CPA funds. We will vote on the annual reservations and appropriations first, and then separately on each of the individual projects. And I now call on Patrick Waddell, Chair of the CPC, for the report of the Community Preservation Committee, and I'll ask Mr. Waddell to read through all of the CPC motions, as Mr. Purdy did with Article One, and if anyone has a question, comment, or proposed amendment, once again, please say "hold" following reference to that budget line item, and we'll handle all holds, or any holds, uh, before proceeding to a vote. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, first, I just want to thank Jackie Breznerhand, our administrator for the CPC, and Catherine Tinsley, our, uh, rec, our minutes taker. Without them, uh, we'd be a mess. And I also want to thank the members of the committee, Janet Burt, Elizabeth Craig McCormick, Dennis Curran, Peter Clay, Barbara Locke, Leo Mistranzie, Tom Starr, our Vice Chair, and Bill Weiss. I move the following. Article Nine, Section One proposes transfer and reservation from C, from Community Preservation Fund FY 2021 and FY 2022 revenues for each of the three purposes of the CPA: historic resources, open space and recreation, and community housing. And then appropriation from 2022 revenues for FY 2022 Community Preservation Committee expenses, as well as an appropriation for FY 22 CPA administrative expenses as printed in the warrant book. Article Nine, Section Two proposes appropriation of $121,900 for the FY 2022 debt service for the town hall, with funding sources as printed in the warrant book. Article Nine, Section Three proposes appropriation of $15,000 for the West Wenham feasibility study from the CPA Open Space and Recreation Reserve. Article Nine, Section Four proposes appropriation of $47,400 as a grant to the Wenham Museum HVAC system, with funding sources as printed in the warrant book. HVAC system, with funding sources as printed in the warrant book. Article IX, Section V, proposes transfer of $150,000 as a grant to the Wenham Affordable Housing Trust, with funding sources as printed in the warrant book. Article IX, Section VI, proposes approval of additional uses of grant funds previously appropriated for use by the community house, but makes no new or additional appropriation of CPA funds.
Okay. Hearing no holds, and double-checking on that. I'd entertain a motion that the town vote to approve all sections of Article IX as printed in the warrant.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Do we have anyone opposed? The ayes have it. On majority vote. Article X. Net metering credit purchase agreements. I'll entertain a motion that Article X be approved as printed in the warrant.
So moved.
Any questions? It's been seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article XI. I'll entertain a motion that Article XI be approved as printed in the warrant.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Alexander. I live at 231 Large Row. It is very awkward to call a woman a select man, as her official title. By this time next week, Wenham will almost certainly have a majority of Board of Selectmen members be women. Our first time ever. It seems very timely to make this the year we modernize the name to Select Board. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Are we ready to vote? Okay, on Article XI, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes most certainly have it, so we now have a Select Board, and a Chair of the Select Board. Okay, citizens petition. Uh, moving along, we've come to the citizens petition. This petition was submitted to the town clerk, had the appropriate number of signatures certified, and the petition is presented in the warrant as submitted. After the motion has been made, I'll allow the petitioner, um, to make a brief presentation. This petition has been reviewed by council, meets the necessary criteria to move forward, and based on the action, uh, by town meeting, based on the action by town meeting, if passed. So I will entertain a motion that the town vote to approve the full text of the citizens' petition article as presented in the warrant. I'm, I'm sorry, who moved? I thought Mr. Coffey would, but somebody, we've got a motion?
So moved.
And seconded? So I would most certainly, uh, recognize Jeremy Coffey, and allow the petitioner to make a brief comment on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeremy Coffey, together with my family, I live on Kimball Avenue. Uh, we're coming up on the 15th anniversary of becoming homeowners in this special little town, uh, which means a couple of months from now, we'll celebrate the 15th anniversary of our first real property tax bill coming in the mail. Um, over the course of that time, I've come to appreciate our form of government. I remember my first time at town meeting, it was a stifling hot day at Buker. People were yelling at each other, they were holding cards up, and I thought to myself, "My God, what have we gotten ourselves into?" But, over the course of time, I've come to see that this form of government has many benefits, but it's not done. There are ways it could be improved. So we have before you a citizens petition requesting an amendment to the Wenham bylaw to add a provision allowing for the recall of elected officials on certain circumstances after following certain prescribed procedures. Uh, if I were to describe the relief requested in one word, that word would be accountability. Accountability. Dictionaries differ a little bit in what they use to, uh, describe that term, but in essence, it means to be responsible for something, or responsible to someone. And we're talking about accountability of elected officials. That responsibility is for their actions, and that responsibility is owed to you, the voters of Wenham, who put them in their seats. With our elected officials, it's important to realize that serving in that capacity is a privilege. And it's a privilege that should be earned, not just in the weeks or days before an election, it's a privilege that should be earned every hour of every day, every moment they sit in the seat that we gave them. And so, as it stands today, we need, I suggest, to remind ourselves and our elected officials of exactly who serves who, and whose voice matters. And I would submit to you that our elected officials serve us, and that our voice matters every day. As it stands, we have the voice to put people into office, but once they're in office, they're there until the end of their term. Absent, um, death or disability, and certainly would wish that on no one, or resignation. But that resignation can come on their terms, on their timeline, and whatever conditions they want to set on it. So I would seek to add to our, the arsenal of voters, the ability to end a term early to the extent an elected official has acted in a way that is so discordant with our expectations of our elected officials, that they are either disabled from functioning in a way that they should, or choose not to, uh, function in the way that we expect of them. So it is, within that spirit, to give you the ability to recall elected officials under certain circumstances, that we have put forth this petition which would allow the Board of Selectmen to take this to the next step, and ask our legislature to amend our bylaw to add that provision. Um, and with that, we've been going a long time, and so I'll stop there, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Uh, or, Mr. Moderator, I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to do.
At this point, you just wait right there.
All right.
Are there any questions, comments? We've got a motion?
Gary Cheesman, Seventy-Seven Pleasant Street. So at the invitation of the Select Board, new name, but you're good, uh, this petition was cooperatively, um, reviewed and developed with the town council's help, so that we're assured that it is in the proper format and going forward to the legislature, and I personally support it. Thank you.
Any other? We've got some comment, we've got a comment or a question in the back? And one in the front? Ladies, ladies first, especially...
Like I just spoke, okay. Uh, Kirsten Alexander, 231 Large Row, and thank you all for sticking it out this far. Many of us were surprised last fall to learn there is currently no way to remove an elected official in Wenham from office. People who abuse their offices can't always be expected to do the right thing and resign, so there must be a mechanism. This citizens petition is well researched, thought out, and has been reviewed by town council. While it doesn't cover jointly elected positions like school committee, if this passes today, it's a good model for Hamilton and the regional school committee to start with. Please join me in supporting this citizens petition to recall elected officers. Thank you.
And the gentleman in front, please.
I, uh, I have more questions, I think, than statements.
And identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken Whitaker, Seventh Enon Road. You've mentioned a couple of times about certain circumstances that would allow this. I think we need to clarify that, because quite frankly, I think we need to be careful what we wish for here. Uh, that can't be an ad hoc decision. Sometimes members, uh, of the board make politically difficult decisions, unpopular decisions. And given the turnout that we have oftentimes in this town, very likely that a, a, a selectman could be kicked out with a minority vote for a certain faction of the population. So I want some clarity on this, you know, this provision here, to really explain what we're doing, and it wouldn't be subject to, you know, the, the winds of political change.
Thank you for the question.
Please, please respond.
Thank you. Uh, the, the question is well-founded, and the, uh, proposed language for the recall provision excludes a, a recall based on, just on the decision of an elected official. So if you don't like their decision, if you disagree with it, that is not a cause for recall. The only time that a decision might be cause for a recall is if there were a, a conflict of interest tainting that decision. In that case, I would say it's less the decision, and more the breach of the duty of an elected official to not act in their own self-interest. Uh, it's not an easy thing to do, um, to effect a recall. First step is, you would have to get an affidavit with signatures of 50 registered voters supporting the recall. That would then be brought to the clerk's office. Once the clerk had certified that all 50 were registered voters, we'd move on to the next step, which is preparation of recall papers. That would call for the signatures of 10 percent of the registered voters in Wenham supporting recall. So roughly speaking, under our current registered voter number, approximately 293 people would have to agree that recall is appropriate. So it's, we've seen the problem in California where recall has been weaponized and used more for harassment than for legitimate purposes. Here, we have built-in safeguards that make it a very high burden to meet to get to recall. And then the, the safeguard, I think, that may be more meaningful is that we are a small, tight-knit community. So at any time, the elected official, the petitioner, and the voters may be neighbors, uh, they may go to the same church, synagogue, or mosque, uh, they may coach your kids' little league team. Uh, we're a close-knit community, and so I think the chances for abuse are much lower here in a community like Wenham than they would be where you can kind of fire and forget, and throw a recall petition in just because you're looking to be difficult. Um, it is designed to be for extraordinary circumstances only, and it is, um, for those extraordinary circumstances that we want to put into the hands of Wenham voters, this additional tool in affecting, um, you know, the will of the people.
We've got a, we've got a gentleman in the back as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ben Timman, 236 Large Row. Getting used to the, uh, microphone here. Um, I think it's a great idea to have a recall mechanism, and I thank all of the people who, uh, were involved in, in putting this one together. Um, the one thing that jumped out to me that I had a question on is the three-year ban on, uh, future election or appointment of someone who, who is recalled or who resigns upon, um, the initiation of recall. And, um, has town council weighed in on that specific item, on its legal enforceability? And, um, maybe just a comment or two, Jeremy, on the rationale behind that? That was the one thing that I wondered whether it might raise an eyebrow at the legislature.
Two-part question. Town council, comment?
Mr. Moderator, Joel Bard, Town Council. Yes, we have. My colleague, Lauren Goldberg, did review all of this and that particular provision, and you raise a good point. There are some recall acts that have been passed that actually seem to try to oppose a perpetual ban, which most of us don't think would stand muster, but we do believe that a three-year, call it a cooling-off period, would withstand any challenge.
And Jeremy, do you have an additional comment?
Just that exactly, that's what we were going for, is a cooling-off period. If someone has done something that would warrant a recall, a successful recall, um, I guess if you were a parent, you might give them a timeout. Um, here, we're asking that they not be serving on a, a board for the next three years. Um, I don't think there's a way to constitutionally, uh, limit them from running for an elected position, but we, we did think putting, um, a limit on their ability to serve on appointed boards for a short period was appropriate.
Unless there are other comments or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. So we've had the motion made and seconded, uh, and all of those in favor of, uh, this article? All of those opposed? The ayes nevertheless have it, uh, on a majority vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Well, we've come to the end of our business here today. And I want to thank everybody for your participation, for your civil debate, and, uh, most importantly, I want to thank everyone who assisted with the setup of this gorgeous outdoor, uh, uh, facility. It would be nice to have movies here, you know, every Friday night, but perhaps not. The ushers will dismiss you now by row, or will try to. There are fewer, there are somewhat fewer of us here. Please be careful as you proceed. Drop off your voting cards, uh, uh, at the exit, and, uh, to the extent that you're able to return directly to your vehicles, so that we can continue to observe physical distancing. And, uh, only pedestrians and bicycles may leave by way of Porter Street. And don't all leave, because I still need a motion to adjourn. To the election. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? To, uh, to, to our annual town election on May 6, when the polls will be open from 7:00 AM, and to dissolve the meeting at the close of the polls at 8:00 PM that day. It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? So, we have an affirmative vote. Thank you very much, and, uh, be careful out there.